A meeting for October 20th, 2020. Time Mac and the mayor. Dave, as clerk of council, would you please call the roll?
Okay, Ms. Born.
Here.
Mr. Coleman.
Here.
Ms. Matroni.
Here.
Mr. Matusak.
Here.
Mr. McCarthy, not present. Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Van Hoozen.
Here.
Thank you.
If you're able, please stand and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Minutes of the council meeting for October 6th. Thank you, your honor, as we just learned here 30 minutes ago, unless there is any objections.
I do have an objection.
Okay, so then at that point.
Nice try, though.
Give it a shot here. What we'll do is, is there one that you don't have an objection, or is there?
Well, I'd just like to give a statement if I could, please.
Well, yeah. So there's not a change in the meeting minutes, or it's just a statement?
I have a statement that I would like to make.
So we need to get to our discussion.
And I do object.
What I will do is make a motion to approve the October 6th, 2020, meeting minutes, as well as the October 6th, 2020, public hearing meeting minutes as written. Discussion.
Yes, I have an objection to the minutes from the October 6th meeting. I'd like to go on the record. Council has the power to add additional info to the minutes. It does not have the power to amend a committee report after the committee report has already been written. Thank you. I'd like to go on record.
Any other discussion? If not.
Well, I guess I'd like to say something. I mean, she says we don't have the power to do it. Either we do or we don't. I'd kind of like to know the answer to the question, and if we don't, then I guess I would, I would suppose that we would then have to reword the way we did the minutes for the council meeting. I mean, I don't know how one council member can say we do or don't have something, we just don't do anything. We don't address it. So, I don't know if the law director is the appropriate person.
Counselor, because I can give you the question, so that I know what I'm answering.
Well, I'll try. It sounds like Councilwoman Born stated that a city council does not have the power to amend a committee report, and she objects to council doing that. And then we just moved to a vote. I mean, I would like to know what the answer to that question is, or that statement, is it a true or false statement? Because it changes what we do.
Um, it was been a couple 30 seconds ago. I have an answer of, yes, I believe you have the power to amend a committee report, but I say that with probably a, I would like the ability to confirm that with research. But yes, I believe that you do have the ability to amend it.
And what do you base that on?
Based on the fact that you don't have anything in your House of Representatives that convinces it.
Okay, well, I'm just going from memory. So I'm not trying to defend anyone, I'm just trying to get to the right answer. Who's responsible, according to our, I don't know if it's our code, or if it's our council rules, who's responsible for a committee report? It does say who's responsible for a committee report.
The chair.
Okay. So if they're responsible for it, does that necessarily preclude council from amending it?
It's an excellent question, and I don't have an answer without doing a little more research for you.
So if that's the case, I don't think we should vote on it. I mean, how are we supposed to know if our law director doesn't know? No, no offense, I didn't expect you to know.
Yeah, I think that, I would just say, the law director wasn't at that meeting, I don't.
Were you here at that first meeting?
No, I think that that was, at the meeting where this was discussed.
He thinks that was her first meeting.
I was there.
Okay.
It just seems odd to me that we vote on something when we don't know the answer to the.
And I'm, yeah, I'm trying to understand this, too, because I think it's going to be important moving forward for our committee.
Yeah.
I mean, you can still read the minutes that you object to what the report says, and it's the opinion of certain people that this is what really happened, but you're not actually amending the report, because we can put what we want in our minutes, but to actually amend someone else's report that they're responsible for.
The general rule is given lack, I mean, I'm just talking in a general sense legally, not about these specific minutes. The general notion is that council does not prohibit it. You would have the authority to make, to make certain comments to it, to make sure that it accurately reflects the contents of what happened. So you have that right.
Deborah. So you're saying we're prohibited from amending your committee report. Do you have a basis for that? I'm just trying to make sure we're doing it right.
Well, if you look at the rules of council, you would notice some things in there.
Well, can you enlighten me on what you found?
I can enlighten you on what my experience is having attended council meetings and having looked up over the years.
It does say in there that the report is.
It's the responsibility of the chairman to submit.
It's also the responsibility to do the agenda as well.
Right. So are you suggesting we don't have the authority to amend your committee report because the code explicitly puts you in charge of that, but?
I stand by what I said in my statement. I'm not changing my statement.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand why you think it's precluded, so, and I guess, add to what maybe your suggestion is, just so I understand it clearly. So you're saying we don't have the power to amend your committee meeting report, and it's my understanding that it's added as an attachment to all of our council minutes?
That's part of the public record.
So are you suggesting that if we wanted to address something that we view as an inaccuracy, we could leave your report alone, but add another attachment that clarifies potentially something that was missing in the committee report, or?
I'm not suggesting anything.
It's actually, it's not an attachment, it's actually baked right into the body of the minutes right now, and that would be the clarification.
Right.
But it wouldn't necessarily be an amendment of the report, because if we amend the report, then her original report is, I don't think is ever part of the public record, and it should stay part of, in my opinion, stay part of the public record, and if we think it should be, we don't think it was accurate, and we wanted to address what we consider the inaccuracies, then we can do that in our minutes of council.
Correct. That's the way I understood it, is that when we're making the, when we're, and I'm sorry to interrupt you.
That's fine.
But from my understanding, and looking at the meeting minutes, is actually list what was changed on there versus actually completely making a change. So the original report, from my belief.
John, you're speaking to.
Sorry.
Be proud of the phone.
From, my understanding here is looking at how the report is, and that it shows the actual specific changes, so it doesn't necessarily change the report, it just shows that council had some concerns and made some additional changes.
And I read the minutes, I did the minutes. Is there anywhere in here that we're making a motion to repeal and replace her report? Because I don't, I don't think that's what we should do. I think we should just, like, like you would say, attention and endem, but we've kind of put it in the body of the minutes, because if it's not clear, then I think what is the right thing to do is kind of determined based on precedent, and if we set that tonight, then all of a sudden we're going to be amending reports all the time.
I think we've already gone down this before. I would not be opposed to waiting to see what our law director comes back with before we pass these meeting minutes, if anybody has any objection to that. I know that there's just some concerns that we want to make sure is addressed, and we do this right. Is there any concerns with making sure that our law director feels comfortable with her opinion?
No, so is that a motion to suspend? Yeah, so how do we?
I believe that you need to take a motion to suspend.
So as the original motion maker, I will make the motion to suspend the, the original motion. Second. Discussion, roll call.
Okay, Ms. Born.
Yes.
Mr. Coleman.
Yes.
Ms. Matroni.
Yes.
Mr. Matusak.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, your honor, for the fun time. Thank you very much. We're, no special reports. We're ladders communication and citizens' concerns. If there's, has a concern, please come up to the podium and of course state your full name, address. John.
Mr. Chairman, your honor, I have a question, which is not directly on the reports, so any of the new reports, so I will ask it now. If you don't mind, I will sit here and talk.
That's very fine, that's fine.
Okay, I read in the December 18th, sorry, October 16th, council update, it said, planning and zoning is working with the Historic Landmarks Commission to review the boundaries of the historic district. And I appreciate it, Mr. McCarthy isn't here, but I would appreciate it if someone would talk a little bit about what exactly they had to do.
Good evening, council and mayor. You may recall that there, I know the Planning and Zoning Committee is aware of this, and I'm not sure if all of council is aware of this, but the Historic Landmarks Commission and the Planning and Zoning Department are looking at the boundaries of historic district because it has been determined that there are portions of homes or parcels that are split both inside and/or outside the boundaries of the historic district. So they're working on a survey to conform those boundaries, to have it make sense. Do we want the whole property out, outside of the historic district, or do we want to bring the rest of the property inside the district? Or in some cases, the rest of a home inside the district or outside the district?
Right. And John, I was at that meeting, so I might be able to talk a little bit about it. What Brody was basically saying is, or from my understanding, and it was, like, it was a while ago, I believe we addressed it at that meeting, when they designed the historic district, I believe it was a meets and bounds legal dis-
Sorry?
It was a meets and bounds legal description. So it didn't necessarily list all the in lots that are included. So it split, like she said, some of those lots, so we're trying to clarify and determine what's inside, what's outside, what's kind of hanging over, to give a more definite line as far as the lots exist now.
Well, that's all well and good, but I would remind you to keep in mind that our current historic district was created to mirror the historic district that was created by the United States Department of Interior when the first action took place in 1976. In order to have a local historic district, it's pretty essential that you have a national registered designation, because that gives you power to pass ordinances, because the national one is simply a permission to do that. And initially, the two districts didn't match. So at about 1990, Mr. McCarthy was chairman of the Planning and Zoning Committee then, and I was on that committee. It was determined that would be most proper to make the two of them mesh, because there were openings. If the other property was in one and not the other, that could cause legal problems which we didn't want to face. So I would be very careful to do this, to get the national registered district boundaries, and make sure you comply with those.
I think, I think that's great advice. Thanks, John.
Yeah, thank you. Okay? Any other citizens' concerns? Oh, yeah, we do actually have a. Thanks for coming. I nearly forgot until you stood up.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, members of the council. My name is Ben Robinson, I'm the new health commissioner here in Wood County. Thank you for letting me speak to you this evening. Just wanted to come to make you aware, as you probably are already aware, that we will have a levy ballot initiative on the upcoming election here in November. We, here in Wood County, have identified that it will cost about $13.16 per $100,000 of home value for homeowners here in the county. Over the last 10 years of our levy, the levy has supported approximately 25% of our annual budgetary concerns, a little more, a little less, depending on the year, but right around about a quarter of those dollars. These dollars are really critical, because based on 2019 data, Ohio was ranked 47th out of 50 states in terms of per capita funding for public health. We only weren't lower, because three, two other states were also ranked 47th, so we were tied with Arizona and Indiana at $53 per capita. So these levy dollars provide a firm foundation for public health, which are really critical to ensure that the programs that we provide can continue and can meet the needs of our citizens. Public health is one of the best investments we can make with our dollars. A national study has indicated that for every dollar we invest in public health, we get about $14 of return investment, which means that an investment in the front end will save us $14 down the road at a median value. And as we look at these dollars, I want to let you know, too, we've leveraged them really effectively over our time having them here. So one example of that is our WIC funding. We spent only about $10 per WIC recipient over these 10 years. For those $10 of funding, about $433,000 over 10 years, has allowed us actually to ensure that about $60,000 of funding goes toward vendors as the WIC recipients cash those benefits, for a total of about $5.4 million that has stayed here in Wood County through those efforts. So these dollars that come in not only help programs to operate effectively, but they actually serve as an investment that is paying dividends then within the broader community. So I just wanted to be here to make you aware of these issues, and wanted to be sure that if there were any questions that you might have about the levy, or about how those ones have been used, that I can answer those for you. And I just want to say thank you for the time.
Why don't you, because you're new, and so probably some of the council members or all the council members may not know a little bit about you, want to tell a little bit about yourself, and is there anything going on at the health department this year?
Yeah, it's been a quiet year in public health this year, as you know. No, thank you for the invitation. So I'm an Old Wood County resident, I grew up in a bowling green area and lived there until 2008. I left after I met my wife at a wedding in Colorado, and so she thought that my living in Ohio and her living in Colorado wouldn't work too well for us getting married, and so off I went to Colorado to be closer to her. Spent about five years there, two years in Chicago, and then came back to Ohio in 2014, where I was at the state health department for the last five years. I told a joke that it actually was my job to respond to pandemics. That was the thing I did, I managed emergencies for the Heart Department of Health, and I actually did leave in the middle of one, to take the job here at Wood County Health Department. So I'm excited to be returning to Wood County now after 12 years away. As you know, we've done quite a bit this year with COVID, that continues to be a concern and a challenge. But we are saying, we shared today, that we're confident that our citizens can continue to combat this effectively. There definitely is no sense of fatalism, we have the ability through application of guidelines to drive our case numbers down, and help to keep our citizens safe, and to think about what life could be like, when we're not concerned about the transmission of disease. So that's a significant concern, but I want to say, too, that a lot of things that aren't COVID go on as well. Everything from inspections to sewage and water support, women infants and children are WIC, which is a supplemental nutrition program, vaccines, and a number of health education programs, too. These efforts help to keep our community healthy, they help to ensure that this is a community that where we can thrive and maximize our opportunities. And public health, along with education and economic development and behavioral health, are things that help us to have an effective community, where people want to live and settle down and invest with their families as well as their time and their income. So we believe that, you know, we want to continue to be a good steward of the money we receive, we're thankful for that money. We're one of 50 county, or one of 50 health departments in the state that actually has a levy, and it really does position us for continued success with public health. So that brings me back here, and I appreciate all the great partnership we've had with our agency in the past, and thank you for the opportunity to step into this role at this time, and for the warm welcome I've received across the council, so.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I'd just like to say thank you for what you do, and you're walking into some big shoes of Mr. Beatty. He did a wonderful job, and I know he's at BGSU now, so thank you so much for what you're doing.
Thank you, and I'm really grateful that he gets to remain a partner with us, remaining in the community, so that partnership continues to thrive with his engagement, and I get to meet with him once a week, so in some ways I feel like he might have set me up, but he didn't go too far, so he remains part of the strategy to the total.
Thank you.
Thank you, mayor.
Appreciate it. Good luck.
Thank you.
No other citizens' concerns, go to administrative report. I have no report this evening. City administrator?
No reports.
Finance director?
No report tonight.
Director of law?
No report.
Thank you very much. President of council?
Thank you, your honor. I do not have a report, but I do have a question. I know if this is a question, a burning question, I think, for everyone in the city of Perrysburg right now, is everything that's going on in Conant Street, with going down to one lane and going over the bridge. I know there hasn't been too much discussion in the committee meetings, so I'm just kind of curious to see if there's been any studies done on the impact that's going to have going over the bridge from our side, as well as if there was any objections that the city had, Perrysburg has given to the city of Maumee during this time.
I think if this microphone were.
There's been lots of communication about.
I think this is working. Good evening again. So there's been several conversations between myself and the city of Maumee's administrator over the last couple months, as well as a group of us, consisting of myself, the police chief, fire chief, planning and zoning administrator, went over to the city of Maumee within the last two weeks, as they were telling us, and finalizing their plans of moving forward with restriping, a temporary restriping project that was supposed to start Monday, this past Monday, so the rain gods are upon us, so I don't know that that's actually happening right now. But we did voice concerns, they showed us some demonstration models that their consultants, DGL Engineering, put together on analyzing that traffic, and what they predict the patterns are. They did show two points in the day, typically during warmer months, rush hour, morning and afternoon, where backups could exist, which they currently exist now, typically on Fridays, we see that most often. So they understood what the impact could be, and that is why they were recommended, or strongly recommended by their engineering firm, to do this on a temporary basis. Their plan is to keep that paint down through the winter months, and then in the spring, at points periodically throughout them, they'll be doing data studies and gathering information on where cars are routing themselves to, to get through downtown or around downtown, and they'll share that data with us in the spring, and then they'll be making their final determination on if they move forward, how they move forward, and when they move forward, and what their project will ultimately look like.
Do we know how that's going to impact traffic in Perrysburg at this point, especially with how heavily?
The only indication that we have is the traffic engineering models, that they actually show cars running on a, essentially a map, a virtual map, based on the traffic counts that they've taken over the course of the last several months, into, I think, including in 2019, they had some data points. So they showed, and it showed twice a day, that there was the potential for a backup across the Maumee Perrysburg Bridge, up close to the Orleans Park entrance, and I know anecdotally that that has happened to me on any given Friday afternoon here in the city of Perrysburg, if you try to get across the river. So those are the only two pinch points that they saw. What they're doing is they're analyzing the receiving lanes on the other side to see if they can lengthen any of the queuing lanes. Once you get across the bridge, you'll go up to Broadway Street, it'll still be two lanes in each direction, then it'll neck down, start necking down into one lane with a dedicated right turn, a through, a dedicated left, and then it gets a little bit narrow as you proceed north. So they're taking a look at that data to see how they can minimize the impacts of any lane queuing up across the bridge. But again, they'll be, once they actually have that temporary paint down and start collecting data over the next several months, then they'll have a really good idea of what's actually going to happen, both not on just our side of the bridge, but their side of the bridge as well.
I think we all have experience trying to cross that bridge once down to one lane, so I think we have a good idea what's going to be like on our end, and I'm just kind of curious what that could potentially do on some of our side streets, with people that are getting frustrated and turning around and trying to find other.
They're also wondering what it's going to do to their side streets. That is definitely a possible negative impact to their traffic flow, is they are going to be monitoring that closely to see if people either come up just past Conant, heading south, or just across the bridge, and if they then branch out into the neighboring neighborhoods to go one more street perpendicular before they head to the trail, so they'll be collecting all that information.
Do that already.
I was going to say, I've done that a few times myself, but what I've.
Guilty.
If, I'm hopeful, I know this is temporary, but if we could, and if the, the head of our chair of our service committee, I would like to see if we can have some reports at that committee level moving forward, just on what we hear and what we learn, so certainly the council can hopefully help at least be involved with that as much as we can.
Bridget, do you know if their temporary plan, under their temporary plan that you're looking at now, do the Conant Street lanes go back to where they're at now before you get to the Anthony Lane Trail?
No. So what they, the setup actually at Conant Street, they'll be, heading northbound, there'll be a dedicated right, a through, and a dedicated left, as you're heading that way, because right now, if you recall, you have one through lane, and then one through lane that also has a right-hand turn to go downtown Toledo, so that'll actually be a dedicated right, a through, and a dedicated left, so they think that'll help some of the traffic congestion and get more people through potentially. But their goal is to have a more pedestrian-friendly downtown and have parallel parking on both sides of the street, so that's part of this restriping project, is part of the goals that they want to achieve. But we can certainly keep the committees and council up to date. As we, as we get information, we can certainly pass it along.
I think it'd be, I'm starting to run, but I think it'd be important for us to know, especially how negatively impacted this is going to be in Perrysburg. I know that they'll be doing their tests in Maumee, but I'd be curious to see where traffic is funneling through.
They will be doing it from our side as well, in the sense that they know where the cars are coming from, that are coming up to both Broadway and then.
But they won't know where they're going when they're turning around, when they see the backups.
Correct, and I don't know that you can do a U-turn across a double yellow, that would be, I think, an illegal move, so.
That doesn't stop people seeing do it all the time.
We've seen stranger things happen, but I know police and fire at this point have not expressed any concern, they were part of the meeting. And again, we know that we have mutual aid runs, both police and fire, with the city of Maumee, as well as that is a potential route for our medics to get to St. Luke's, so they are aware of that, both chiefs are aware of it, and they're not, at this point in time, expressing any concerns, but they'll be receiving that data, and anecdotally, taking note and feeding that information back to Maumee if they're aware of any situations.
As someone who lives in that area and often runs down over the bridge, they're very unrealistic if they think Friday is even now an only issue, Thursday afternoon, I was going somewhere, it was already back up to light, and it wasn't.
They anticipate, though, that the pinch point would be twice a day, every day, Monday through Friday.
I think they're unrealistic. I think it'll be maybe twice a day it's not backed up.
Not a traffic engineer, I will rely on their data for that. They are using both DGL, Manik and Smith, and there's one other consulting firm involved, because they're also, at the same time that they're working on this, they also are working on a major overhaul of State Route 24 through that corridor as well.
I'm not, don't get me wrong, I'm not doubting you, I'm doubting not.
Not my project.
Exactly, right, from what I've observed and my experience, there, it's going to be a mess, 20, it's not going to be limited to Fridays, just saying.
Oh, no, they did not indicate it would be limited to Fridays. They said rush hour each day. They would anticipate a backup towards Orleans Park.
But I don't see it just.
As well as their side up to Conant Street, potentially trying to head southbound.
It's going to be worse that rush hour, it's going to be all day, but it'll be worse at rush hour.
If I can think out loud here, which I have a tendency to do, if you're a merchant in, what do they call it, uptown Maumee or downtown Maumee, and people are going to avoid going through that part of Maumee because of the traffic, it's not going to play well with the merchants, because you're going to be avoiding their storefronts.
Right. I can say one of the things that their administrator noted, that part of this project, to achieve the parallel parking on Conant Street, was to add more parking for the businesses who are adding, asking for more parking, so this will be a good case study to see how this all pans out.
Thank you, your honor, that is the end of the president of council's report. Any questions? Thank you very much. Finance and Economic Development Committee?
Thank you, mayor. We did meet on October 13th, I think everybody's got the report. I think Mary Jo had this report ready almost immediately, and I gave her the okay about an hour and a half ago, and she made sure that everybody got it. I'm not going to read it to you. Go over it real quick. The first part, the appropriations, the incumbents of CARES Act funds, we got a couple pieces of legislation tonight regarding that, and our law director provided us with a legislative summary that tells us pretty much everything we need to know about that. Finance director's report, we did everything we typically do with that. The only thing I would draw to your attention is that the welfare fund is downward, probably should be anyway, but Mr. Krepp seems to think we're going to be okay, and I trust him. Let's see. He presented the certificate of estimated resources, and that is my third piece of legislation tonight. And then as far as the budget goes, we didn't talk about anything in particular, but Ms. Cabot did make it a point to offer up the budgets for those city departments that aren't kind of currently under the purview of any particular committee, whether it's service or safety or something like that. And I did get those, I'm assuming everyone else on the committee got those, and for that matter, did you send it out to everybody on council?
Well, I sent it out to all the committee members, but what I can do as a follow-up for all council, once we ship out the safety committee ones, and then resend out all the specific ones to all council members all at one time.
Okay, perfect, that way everybody gets to see everything, okay. And then the Tax Commissioners' Report, Mr. Brown had went over where we're at year to date, and there were no surprises there. And our next meeting is currently scheduled for November 10th at 5:30 PM. So I've got three pieces of, three pieces of legislation, and the agenda for tonight says we're going to suspend the third reading, I don't think we've had a second reading for any of these, so I believe we'd be, correct me if I'm wrong, that we're suspending the second and third reading on all of these?
Yes.
And what I'll do is, I'll do the first one separately, and the other two are related, they go hand in hand, so I'll start with the first piece that I have here, make sure I get this right. So I'd like to introduce Ordinance 162020, and move that the rules be suspended to allow for its reading by number and title only, and to dispense with the second and third readings.
Second.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Yes.
Mr. Coolman.
Yes.
Ms. Matroni.
Yes.
Mr. Matusak.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen.
Yes.
Ordinance number 162020, accepting amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission of Wood County, Ohio, to authorize necessary tax levies and certify them to the county auditor and declaring an emergency.
I move that Ordinance 162020 be passed as an emergency measure.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Okay, Ms. Matroni.
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen.
Yes.
Mr. Matusak.
Yes.
Ms. Born.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Coolman.
Yes.
Thank you. Next, I would like to introduce Ordinances 17 and 182020, and move that the rules be suspended to allow for their reading by number and title only, and to dispense with the second and third readings.
Second.
Roll call.
Okay, Ms. Born.
Yes.
Mr. Coolman.
Yes.
Ms. Matroni.
Yes.
Mr. Matusak.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen.
Yes.
Okay, Ordinance number 172020, amending Ordinance number 472019, Ordinance 102020, and Ordinance 132020, to amend appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures for the year beginning January 1, 2020, and ending December 31, 2020, by encumbering all City of Perrysburg Safety Force payroll funds from November 1, 2020, through December 27, 2020, and declaring an emergency. And Ordinance number 182020, amending Ordinance number 472019, Ordinance 102020, and Ordinance 132020, to amend appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures for the year beginning January 1, 2020, and ending December 31, 2020, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, I move that Ordinances 17 and 182020 both be passed as emergency measures.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I just would like to, I'm not trying to nitpick on this, but, and I could have asked this earlier, but I didn't save myself enough time to do that, to do it behind closed doors, so I'll ask tonight. Exhibit A, that's attached to Ordinance 18, doing what I do for a living, I guess I'm curious as to why the amount that we're going to put in Exhibit A, the total, that's not exactly the same as the total amount that we have been given for CARES, it's kind of like we left some money on the table.
Actually, it should be, if I'm looking at it correctly, for Exhibit A, for Ordinance 182020, 1,721,997,24, what that number reads about?
So is that changed from what the, well, I'm comparing, actually, I'm comparing it to what's in the, I'm sorry, Dave, I'm comparing it to the, not the total, it's in the legislative summary, which is not that number.
No, okay.
So you're, you're saying that in...
And is it off by somewhere in the neighborhood of $8, $9?
I didn't even look at, I didn't even look, I just looked and said, why are these numbers different, you would think that they would be the same.
I know, that, I'm very confident that this number that is in the attachment is correct.
It's the total amount that we've been allocating.
Yes.
Okay, that's all that matters, okay.
That's the total of all three payments, there was two payments with the first allocation, one payment with the second allocation, and they totaled 1,721,997.
Okay, yeah, because I'm looking at the, I mean, I trust you, I'm just looking at legislation, it's 1,722,266,70, which is the sum of the two, and I did, I did foot the two numbers in the, that she used, and she got the right total, but that's not the number that's in that, so somewhere along the line, something, as long as they are equal, that's what matters, so, gotcha, all right, okay, that was all I had.
Counselman, I think I had the wrong numbers, this, I created your legislative summary.
Okay.
So go off of the numbers in the attachments, that would be part of the ordinance, not the legislative summary.
Okay.
And I know you sent like three, the packet three times, so is this just something that didn't get changed through that amendment, like you amended the exhibit, but not the...
So I have these numbers from previous legislation, that are in your legislative summary from the previous legislative summary, but it is perfectly possible that we, the Law Directors, have been wrong more than once and just didn't realize, didn't catch it.
And in this particular case, Ms. Sandredo sent out a new Exhibit A.
She did.
That new Exhibit A was because I had to correct the exhibit, original exhibit that I gave her, so she created the legislative summary based on the original exhibit I created, I went back and reworked the math, realized that I had missed a few dollars, so she needed to send out an Exhibit A that was corrected, but the legislative summary, summary had already gone out with it.
So I guess I would ask that in the future, when you send out a complete new council packet and say you've made some revisions, you let us know what you revised, so we don't have to go...
For Exhibit A, we did, in the third version.
That one you did, the first one, I'm like, oh, I don't know what she revised, and I'm not going to go along my...
Yeah, we can clarify.
Yeah, it saves us some time.
You don't want to reveal things, but...
I do enough of that, I don't want...
Okay, so...
Perfect, thank you.
Any other discussion?
I do have a question on seven, on Ordinance 17, to the date of city, it says on here, the date of City of Perrysburg has received coronavirus funds totaling 942,957.69. Then it says approximately 860,000 of the distributed coronavirus funds may be spent on safety force payroll, beginning November 1, 2020, through December 20th, December 27, 2020, where does the, where does the remainder go?
So, this is just to encumber the November and December safety force payroll, which is approximately 860,000 dollars that we can spend this coronavirus on. We are going to spend the rest of the coronavirus money on safety force payroll that we didn't have to encumber, because it's, well, will already be spent by our due date, and items we've already purchased under the Coronavirus Act that were purchased at the beginning of the whole thing. So the answer is more safety force payroll and cleaning and other items that we had already purchased.
Thank you.
And that includes the new filter systems for all the buildings, correct?
Yes.
Everything but the kitchen sink has been thrown in there.
It just had to be encumbered by certain...
Paid or encumbered, that's all we're doing here, is uncovering what hasn't been paid.
Right, yes, we didn't want, we followed your instructions about making sure we got everything.
We're doing our best to do what the state is telling us to do.
Right, any else, roll call please.
Okay, start with Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Matusak.
Yes.
Mr. Coolman.
Yes.
Ms. Born.
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen.
Yes.
Ms. Matroni.
Yes.
Thank you.
And that is all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Service Committee?
I think I can get this right today. We have not met since the last council meeting, so I have no minutes or legislation. Our next meeting is October 28th at 5:30, that's all I have.
Well done.
Yeah.
Safety Committee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I also have no report, our next meeting will be on October 20, Tuesday, October 27 at 6:00 PM.
Thank you. Recreation Committee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I also have no report, we have not met. The next Recreation Committee meeting is scheduled for November 10th at 6:30 PM, thank you.
Planning and Zoning Committee?
In absence of Mr. McCarthy, he asked me to read the minutes and offer an ordinance, so the meeting we had was held on October 14th, and attendees were as indicated. Code amendments regarding chickens, the committee considered, proposed code amendment to Chapter 121502, specialized animal raising and care, keeping, and keeping of chickens, Chapter 1225, land use table, that were the subject of a public hearing held on October 6th. These changes would allow the keeping of up to six hens within zoning districts A, R1, R2, and R3 with certain accompanying requirements. The Planning Commission voted 5-1 to maintain the status quo and not approve the code amendments. Scott and Carolyn Struzinski, Tintin Mulberry was present in support of the proposed code amendments, Ms. Carolyn said that they were down to three chickens and were hoping to go back to six, which would be permitted under these amendments. Greg Beatty was present, he stated that as a member of the Planning Commission, he said that the only one, that only one current member of the commission was on when the last legislation was passed. He said that he felt the ordinance was a little too general, and he has concerns about compliance. Mr. McCarthy noted that the ordinance would not permit hens in R4 zoning districts, it would require a minimum size of 7,500 square feet, and would require the chickens to be kept in a backyard with at least a 10-foot setback on the coop and run. There was a lengthy discussion about regarding lot sizes, Mr. Walters said that he feels the lot size is more relevant than the zoning district. He recommended that the lot size be at least a quarter acre, which is the original lot size for lots within the boundaries before lot splits were allowed. There was also discuss, also discussion regarding 10-foot setback, and the committee decided that 15 would be more appropriate. Mr. Coolman asked about a special approval use process because then neighbors would be notified, Mr. Walters noted that there is a $200 special fee for, for special approval use. Mr. McCarthy said that he thinks the requirements that have to be met, that have to be met to raise hens would achieve the goals without going through the special approval process. Mr. Coolman said that he would also like to see minimum requirements for the coop and run, and he said he would like to see language requiring humane treatment of the hens. Mr. McCarthy asked that Mr. Walters and Mr. Sandredo, Ms. Sandredo, look at other communities' hen ordinances. Mr. McCarthy said that he is hearing that the committee is receptive to keeping of the hens with proper restrictions, and will be considered at next month's meeting. Code amendment regarding parking lot maintenance, it was decided to amend, which we will be voting on, the size in which, in essence, commercial properties will have as a percentage to upgrade, or mean, they're parking from 10% to 20%. Under other business, Anne Steck was present regarding a driveway matter, she was unaware that she needed a driveway permit, and the contractor installed a driveway without a permit or inspection. She said that received, she received a letter from the Planning and Zoning Office stating that she would have, she could have a ground penetrating survey done to verify the depth. She said that these unprecedented, during these unprecedented times, she was asking for relief of the regulations. Mr. Walters said that unfortunately, the resident is stuck between the contractor and the rules, the contractor was not licensed and bonded with the city at the time he did his work, and has had multiple offenses with our, their office. Mr. Walters said that the Planning and Zoning Division's goal is to resolve this without additional costs to the resident. He said that the city is going to call the, call the bond of the contractor, and will work with Ms. Steck to have the driveway reinstalled. Mr. Coolman asked if the list of licensed contractors can be placed on the city's website. Mr. Walters said that he can look into it. I acknowledge that it could be a challenge to keep it current, because the status could change day to day. Brittany and David Nojam, Nejman, and I apologize for the mispronunciation, were present to request a variance be approved to keep their pool where it was installed, even though it was closer than the required 15 feet to the property line, or that the required setback be lowered. They explained that they had, have had, they have numerous utility, utility lines running through their yard, she said that the location of the above-ground buried pool of, is restricted because of where the electric lines are. Mr. Walters stated that the permit that was pooled showed the proper setback, and sometime during construction, the location of the pool got shifted. He explained that the setback is not something that falls within the purview of the Board of Zoning Appeals. Mr. McCarthy said that the committee does not have the authority to grant a variance that a subordinate body could not grant. Law Director Sandredo, and I hope I'm seeing that right, that the administration is dealing with another pool issue, an in-ground pool that was installed within the 15-foot setback. She said the administration is reviewing how to move forward. Mr. McCarthy asked that we sit tight for now. Mr. Walters distributed the Planning and Zoning Budget worksheet, Ms. Cabot stated that the developer inspection payments were reduced and wages are reduced, because there will, there will only be 26 pay periods, as opposed to 27. So the meeting was adjourned at 7:19, our next meeting will be on November 12th, Thursday, at 5:30 PM, which is a change from the regular timing date. And I also have an ordinance, I would like to introduce Ordinance 192020, and move that the rules be suspended to allow for its reading by number and title only, and to dispense with the second and third readings.
Second. Roll call, sorry, my bad.
Okay, roll call, Ms. Born.
Yes.
I was trying to move us along.
Yes.
Ms. Matroni.
Yes.
Mr. Matusak.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen.
Yes.
Ordinance number 192020, amending Catified Zoning Ordinance, Section 1250.06A of the City of Perrysburg's zoning code, to allow for 20% improvements without a permit.
I move that Ordinance 192020 be passed.
Second. Discussion?
I do have a quick discussion item on this one, this is, I'm looking at the non-conforming driveways for our residents, as well as for the business, and one of the questions I would like to ask is, under the existing non-conforming driveways, because we've had quite a few businesses that have come in from the township over the years, has there been, excuse me, has there been given any thought of adding the line under that, be a part two, which is if an existing non-conforming residential driveway is being replaced, the Planning and Zoning Division must perform an onsite inspection of the driveway to be replaced and document the dimensions of the current driveway prior to being removed, to allow for the repair of a non-conforming parking lot, especially for some of our smaller businesses, where going through these site plans and adding islands and things like that may be cost prohibitive for some of these smaller businesses, especially during the economic times these businesses have experienced here lately.
We did have conversation about that, and I think that the consensus says that this is an accommodation for those smaller businesses, increasing the scope from 10 to 20% allowed without the additional islands and so forth, but that the code that we have, the zoning that we have moving forward, we want to implement that, as difficult as that may be for these businesses.
There was discussion on that, that was one of the things I brought up as a potential exemption, is if your lot size is below a certain area, that it might be potentially exempted from, as long as you're replacing what exists there, exempt from the permitting process, and it sounded like zoning would prefer that we stick to a blanket for all businesses, no matter how small the lot may be, and they pointed to the way our zoning has now been updated to try to push us into the, into the future, so...
And I understand that, I know that there's been conversation that has been brought up, I think here before, of some businesses that feel that it, they, it's harder to do business with the City of Perrysburg, and I'm not trying to say that this, moving forward, we don't want to have the perception, I'm just curious to see if that's something that this council would be, consider adding on there as a way to help some of those, just trying to replace what they have with better material versus having something that is slowly falling apart, if, if you follow what I'm trying to say here. Because I would be in support of adding that on there, I know that I may be one of six up here tonight that would be in support of that, but... I know that I may be one of six up here tonight that would be in support of that, but...
You're supportive of adding that on to tonight's legislation?
To add that on as a portion of this to be... Since we're looking at this entire code here, to add that on as another potential.
What exact language are you looking for? If you don't mind.
Is that a friendly amendment?
Well, I guess from a administration's point of view, it'd be a little difficult given that you're changing the zoning code... Or you're changing the zoning code section, and there's a Planning Commission issue with that. Then also, you have some no requirements, and Brody's not here to kind of be able to respond to it.
Okay.
I guess that's your cause of...
I don't mean to confuse, but I am... What are you suggesting that?
Yeah, so under our current driveway code, it's 1250.51, I believe. Part E. Let me look and make sure I got it all the top here. Part E. Number 2. It states on there, if the existing non-conforming residential driveway is being replaced, the Planning and Zoning Division must perform an onsite inspection of the driveway to be replaced and document the dimensions of the current driveway prior to it being removed. Failure to allow for this onsite pre-inspection of a non-conforming driveway shall require the new driveway to conform to all current requirements in the event that the existing driveway is found to be in conflict with the section we could recommend. If it's something that we... And I can screenshot, email this to you, so you can look it up.
So you're...
Go ahead.
I was going to say, so I believe the section you're talking about is one we're not touching tonight.
Well, no.
So what we did talk...
We are talking... Because what I'm discussing is, this is coming from the residential one. And then if we're trying to mirror that for the repair and maintenance, we might as well mirror everything from...
So that was something we did talk about as well, is we are doing this to help facilitate... We're increasing... We're basically adding a provision for commercial parking to give them what was going to be a mirrored percentage for replacement, which would have been at 10%. That got suggested from committee, the Planning Committee, to up it to 20%. So when we were having that discussion at Planning and Zoning, we basically decided that one of our next agenda items is going to be revisiting the driveway.
Well, I'm talking about the commercial parking lots itself, including that under this as well. Including what we have in the driveways under that as well.
Councilman said, if you want to do that, you are welcome to do that, but we're going to have to take it back to Planning and Zoning.
We could potentially move... So I guess if I say is to bring that section maybe back to Planning and Zoning.
Because it would have to go to public hearing.
Yeah, you've got a whole... Right, you've got Planning Commission, Public Hearing.
Because the zoning code is...
Yeah, I understand.
It has to go to public hearing. So if you... I don't have a dog in the fight. I'm just letting you know that if we're going to do that, we're going to have to take that back through all the stuff.
No, and I appreciate, maybe this is something that we look at adding on before, because I know that this is something that's needed for certain businesses right now, this potential change. But I honestly believe it would be appropriate for us to consider some sort of similar language we have for residential driveways for some of our business parking lots that have been in town for some time. I know that it's been a hassle for our businesses going through some of these codes, especially the smaller ones. And I think it would be a nice relief that could be added if, again, they reach out to Planning and Zoning Department prior to doing the replacement.
And like Tom said, you know, Brody is not here. His opinion, or I guess his fallback at that meeting was, there's a reason we paid so much for the code, the Planning and Zoning code, was so that we could get these businesses that may have non-conforming uses up to what our master plan is on the zoning level. And his office did recommend that we stick with 10%. So if you wanted to completely replace something, it'd be over a period of 10 years. And we're recommending something that's a little more liberal than that. So I would say I'm comfortable revisiting the driveway aspect, but I do...
It's not a driveway.
Well, to clarify. No, I get what you're saying. I...
To take what we have in the residential driveways and looking at implementing that on this. And if we don't have to do it tonight, is what I'm trying to say as well, then it sounds like we can't do that tonight anyways. I would like us to look at that, because I'm assuming the Planning Commission, when they went through this recommendation, and anybody can correct me if I'm wrong here, didn't have that conversation as well.
Well, we did. We felt that the... Not exactly that way. There was discussion about the 20%, which actually was Planning Commission, I think, felt comfortable with that. What I would suggest, there was also some discussion at that meeting about how best to make sure that you get compliance as to extent fully as possible. And really, there's some difficulties with just how you decide. What's a measuring small business, the lot size and some other things. So that would really need to be kind of fully hashed out. And that's why it was kind of cut where it was. So I guess the administration's thinking would be, this is certainly something council can consider or recommend to go back to the Planning Commission as addition to that. That would kind of solve, sort through the issue and kind of give everybody a full chance to vet the question. Because I think I understand a little bit of what you're trying to do there.
I mean, I don't mind moving forward with this. I think it would be nice to look at doing that, especially for some of our smaller businesses.
Jonathan, I like your thought. And I think it should be researched further, whether that's at Planning Commission. I don't know the Planning and Zoning necessarily likes that, in my opinion. But I think that where we are with small business today, it should be considered.
Yep. That is very fair.
So I guess I would just make the suggestion then that we will send that... Probably, I'm assuming we would send it to Planning and Zoning Committee to, then in turn, send that to Planning Correction, I think is the correct procedure for that. So hopefully, and I'll bear your filling in for Tim McCarthy shoes.
Not even. Not even.
But we can make sure it's on the agenda for next.
With... And hopefully with the two committee members here to make sure that that gets to Planning and Zoning, because I think it's something that we should definitely look forward to. With the winter time, no one's replacing parking lots anyway, so there's some time to get that done.
That's correct. That's another factor. That's a good point. Okay, any other discussion?
Is that a friendly, fair point, or is that a...
Yeah, it was friendly. I think discussion was friendly. We got that going for us. So the pending ordinance as proposed is now, I think, up for...